All right, it is six thirty, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is our educational focus, and I'd like to welcome Trey, and thank you for coming tonight.
How's everybody tonight?
Good, how are you doing?
Pretty good, thanks for having me, and I appreciate-
Thanks for coming.
No problem at all. I appreciate the opportunity to kind of explain where we're at with the new website process, kind of review where we maybe should have been, and kind of what happened in between those two things. You got handed what's the project timeline, basically outlining what I had hoped or we had hoped to accomplish in these timeframes. The red indicates the anticipated timeframes, and the green indicates where we're at with the overages of those processes. So when you evaluate the tasks on left and the timeframes associated with that, you'll see, you know, the administrative functionality or administrative functions went on generally as planned. There was some extra research to be done when it comes to the options we had to choose as an institution for their service. So it could have been just an upgrade of the website itself to the new format, making it possible to have a cleaner look, more modern look, more desirable for phone use, all of the bells and whistles of a modern web design or a modern web template. But also they offered a whole messaging platform that we evaluated and found it obviously wasn't for us for the amount of money. We did a cost comparison with what we currently have, it didn't make sense. So it was a process of just evaluating their offerings versus what we actually needed. So ultimately, this is where that process got extended. In addition to that, during this timeframe, School Insights, which is our provider of our services, had experienced a ransomware attack that brought their entire infrastructure and hosting services down for about three days. You probably remember, our website was down for about three days. So their recovery took the bulk of that time. The processes that we were involved with got halted, obviously, as they recovered their infrastructure. I will say, before the questions ask, I am still very confident in them as a service provider. I'm sure you've read the news, you know, municipalities and cities and state governments are experiencing these ransomware attacks, and they're debilitating. You can have layers upon layers of security to prevent it. It only takes really one perfect scenario to get you, and if it gets you, there's a recovery to do. So in the three-hour, three-day timeframe that they were able to recover in, gave me confidence that they're prepared for these attacks in order to mitigate them and bring us back online. For us to have experienced no downtime was just not a reality, you know. They brought their entire infrastructure down, their phone system, their email system. They were dead in the water for forty-eight hours total as a business, so they lost hundreds of thousands of dollars from it. So that was kind of the first area of setback. And of course, as you know, things depend on other things, and as we progressed through the determination of staff members, building teams, permissions, I wasn't able to do any of these functions until I got control of the site in order to make the editing and start actually build our new site. So that being said, we are extended right now about four weeks beyond our projected launch date. Actually, more like six weeks, but I'll be honest with you, August first was, that was the projected date. That was like, everything falls in line, August, sorry, October first, that was our hit. Again, with what happened unfortunately. In addition to that, the start of the school year impacts everyone. Obviously, my department's heavily impacted during the rollout of new services, new devices, new students. So that, obviously, the man-hours available got cut back during the first couple of weeks of school in my department. And in addition to that, to tax teachers and staff with, hey, go find us some content, you know. Hey, what do you want to see? You know, they're super motivated to get that year started on a good foot. So they were really focused, and the last thing I wanted to do was pull them away from that focus, being at the beginning of the year so critical. But the message is getting out there right now, and we're trying, we are gathering some steam in getting, you know, building some teams, trying to get some content and some more ideas, because this process starts and ends with ideas. To just set up a framework of a site with general information, like, we can do that, no problem. It's, what it's got to turn into is how do you want it to look to other folks, right? What do you want to present the school as? And up until this point, we haven't really had a clear vision of that. We're definitely working towards that more and more every day. In addition to bringing in some social media presence, we have a new Facebook site Dan Adams is administering that we hope can gain a lot of popularity real quick, so we can overtake all the unofficial sites. Facebook works on algorithms, and it's about how many people like, how many people visit, how many people tag. So as we go along, that presence will be the only one that's visible to, the only one visible. But the top hit in that search, Linwood Search, right now unfortunately, there's an unofficial page that takes precedence over us right now, so we're trying to get the participation moving so we can get our actual official presence to the top. So any questions on the timeline or any of the information over here as far as clarification?
You said we're, you said we're four weeks out from the new launch date. Is that four weeks from now or from October one?
That's four weeks from now.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm hoping to get before Thanksgiving break is the tentative launch date for us right now. We are well on our way, though, once I flip it up and you kind of see where we're at, we're well on our way. I think at this point, having possession of the site, having some clear direction, our site map, which I'll show you, we've been working on, the framework is being built. So once we build the frame, you just got to fill it with stuff. So that's that content, two, three-week period that you kind of, you got to have to gather it and vet it and approve it and make sure, because we deal with things like student pictures and the FERP violations or not violations, but the student privacy is very forefront right now. So everything we do, we have to consider that, and that railing everything back. We want to be sure that we're compliant before we launch, period. So that's, that due diligence is where we're at right now, critical. So just real quick, this is our preliminary site map, which shows, so to explain this generally, your homepage would be obviously your homepage. These would be your dropdown focus areas, and it doesn't necessarily have to be a dropdown menu. They can be, and you'll see the new design and kind of how it works. But, you know, we've been working on this, going through and figuring out, what do we want to see underneath the district? So we can, our focus areas under the district as they stand now. And again, just going in base level at this point, policies, bidding, everything that you'd expect to see, you know, within the district yet, not overblown to the fact, to the point where people just stop looking at it. Because that's, we're kind of experiencing that right now. There's just a whole lot of information that's garbled around, and there's more than one place to get it on our current site, which confuses people. So this, we whittle down one area, we make the contain that, that is where this is, it's the only place that is. So that's kind of a huge, a very critical part of the process also. And again, we can, I can give you a copy of this if you like, but it's pretty much, like I said, just your basic framework of districts, you know, on down, academics, which will cover curriculum. So current curriculum, broken down by grade level, broken down by subject matter in a, in a easy-to-understand roadmap to get there. And again, providing information we haven't been provided, essentially. So just to kind of quell or quantify what we have and determine what we don't have, that's been the bulk of the process, you know, saying, we have all this garbage look, but we don't even have a lot of the things that are necessary that people just want. They just want that information, no one had to search around for it, it should just be in the forefront, so. So that's our site map. So, and again, this expanded upon as we build. This is our current site. So a lot of the things that we, you know, that I've just mentioned in terms of, you know, it's a lot, you know, you got dropdowns here to get the information, and then with this site design, you also have these community tags. And so this, this really confuses people, we're going away with this whole formatting. This, you won't have three places to get something, so. Is there any, anyone can just state, you know, beyond what I've already stated in regards to this website, some things just for our knowledge that you see as a problem, just as we move forward to address?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Is there, so can I ask like what we are potentially going to have on the new site?
Well, absolutely, yeah, I mean, in terms of whatever you don't see here, you know, that kind of thing.
Is there going to be a link to some type of old school calendar where, instead of looking at multiple sections, you can just look on a calendar and these are the events going on, happening with?
We, well, we do have a current, obviously, we have a calendar functionality here that is something comprehensive in the sense of, you know, any extracurricular activity would be on here.
Is the question more integrated, so that, you know, you get sent to big teams for one calendar or one schedule, or you get sent to some other places? Is there going to ever be, is there possible to pull from all of those places where information can put down one central calendar that people can go on?
Absolutely, that's what I meant, that's all right. No, no problem, that makes, you're absolutely, I got what you're saying, I'm just, in terms of this, you know, I understand exactly what you're saying, this is very, this is very cumbersome. The color coding doesn't help anyone if you don't understand what the color codes are in this.
As fine as it is, if everything was there.
And that's, and again, that's, so in a new format, you have the ability with the school calendar to create event groups and event group users. So for instance, our calendar's not configured, I can just kind of show you where it lives inside. Right now, we have it just here, so. So ultimately, on this calendar, there's going to be a dropdown that'll have athletic schedule, extracurricular, you know, whatever, FPLA meetings. We can address all those functions with a dropdown menu, so it's a lot cleaner look. And again, it brings everything together. So that's, that's a huge upgrade, this calendar function versus that. So yeah, very understandable request, and like I said, it's, that's one I've definitely dealt with before, so.
One of my other questions was, I'm sure you've heard this a lot, anyone who uses their mobile device, they don't have access to the, this website currently, mostly go to the green screen, different things. Are there going to be mobile versions to the?
Absolutely, it's an adaptable, sorry, word's escaping me. Not adaptable, I lost it. But it, whatever device it appears on, it configures itself to look the best on that device. And I'm very tired of my work right now. But anyway, absolutely, and you'll get a chance to see that once, once you look at the new site, you can look at URLs and plug that URL into your phone, and you often go to it right now. And that's why I say whenever I show it to you and you say, I want you to continue looking at it. As we build, you guys will have, I'm not going to release the URL to anyone else. If it's searched on Google, someone who knows what to do can find it, because it is out there, but it's not public as of yet. But I definitely wanted you guys to be involved and just aware as we build. You see something go on there, you enjoy, give us a tip, you know, anything like this, we want all the input we can get. And just a tip on this site, if you do go to this on your mobile phone, and again, another cumbersome operation, but on top of that green bear, there's a super tiny link that says, see full site. And you do get the full site, but again, it's a lot of stuff crammed because of the way we're, with the dropdowns and the way. So either way, it's not a great experience, I totally agree with you. So that being said, this is our current framework for the new site. As you can see, it's, it's different in the sense that there are, again, we don't have, this is very preliminary, just by the way. We don't have the circle focus areas. We do, what we do have is, you know, hot links for things that are relevant, and we can change these and amend these. We can do eight, we can do ten, we can do small, we can do big, we can. This format allows us a great bit of flexibility in terms of front, oh, any page really, but the front page is definitely where you want to be. These hot links and dropdowns can be configured anything also. Again, we just kind of, I left those there just to demonstrate that they are usable. Dan Adams and I have been doing a lot of this work together. He's extremely skilled web administrator, web builder, at his other position in Hattie School. As a frame of reference, if you wanted to check out their site, he designed that site. He worked on that site for six solid months as the only guy doing it. So he's really given me an insight as to what it's going to take to get this where we want it to be. So that's why I say this is all, again, preliminary, you can change any, obviously, the pictures. This will be a rotator, we can put in hot link rotating, so check out this footage from the soccer game. Boom, it'll be going around, you click it, it'll send you to a connection. You know, if you do that, we can embed kind of connection directly to any of these pages, front, back. You can do videos behind, any kind of modern feature that you've seen on sites, we can do all those things. And again, it's just about finding the right content and having the right information available to whatever one needs. So ultimately, I guess the next question is, what's next? We already talked about a possible launch date, I think we're very confident we can hit that. And I think, again, with as much help and input as we can get from people, the better off we're going to be. The last thing we want to do is roll too fast and have something we have to backtrack on. So that's whenever the hot launch goes, we want it to be right, we want everyone to be in agreement. This is how we want to put ourselves out there. And again, I mentioned Dan Adams, he's actually willing to administer the site off hours as well for, you know, typical stipend setup for staff members, something we can discuss later. But in terms of having, the point of that is to have a full-time point man who is obligated and willing and, you know, has the desire to maintain, stay current, keep, keep our face out there in the manner in which we want it to be. So that's, that's where we're at, and anybody have any questions, concerns, anything at all? Any given by all means, if you want to go to your phone, it was this, that, any time, but it's just link at woodstock.schoolinsights.com. I can email that too, if you'd like, email your link.
The only thing I just want to share with you, you probably already know it, but if you click on it, if you go through the staff list and I click on somebody's name, sometimes, oftentimes, when I click on a name, if it doesn't go to the page, it goes to a Google sign-in area.
Yeah, that is-
I'm sure it's a mapping thing.
It's a permission error, and that's definitely something that-
Quite a few of the staff members.
Yeah, and again, and there's obviously, there's staff members as well that don't have a presence right now. We're working on, you know, it's more professional development, really, it's what it's going to take is some more professional development on my part to get folks up to speed to be able to have a presence. A lot of the teachers have wonderful, very extensive teacher pages. We're hoping to at least create a standard that says, you know, obviously, contact information, curriculum in your class for your courses, and, you know, if possible, homework Dropbox, all that. All those things are possible with the new format and people's sites, even so. But yeah, that's a permission error, and we can, I'll put them on my list, and I will absolutely review, because it makes no sense for a parent to see it, click it, and there's a brick wall. That's not what we want at all.
Yeah.
Yes, so that's something I can address sooner than later, for sure.
Anything else? Well, thank you, thanks for coming.
No problem at all. Like, I appreciate your, I appreciate your patience, first of all, through the process, because it has been up and down, you know, and I understand that not knowing what's going on is the worst part of it. So again, feel free to shoot me any questions, email, by any means, anything you got at all, and I can answer them to the best of my ability and as we move forward.
Yeah, we look forward to seeing it.
Sheila, welcome.
Oh!
You can head us already?
We're just ready on.
Yay, they want to go home, so I'm sure. Yes, that'll work.
So for those of you who don't know, I'm Charmaine, I'm the president of the Class of 2020. Oh yeah, can you distribute them, sorry? That's our current classroom.
Okay, so my name is Jay Fitzgerald, and I'm the vice president. So last year, we presented to you guys about like where we're going, and I think everything went well. This year has done some changes, but just go over like the numbers and stuff.
Yep, so we got a tally, sixteen out of twenty-three of our students will be participating in the class trip, and we have three chaperones being Sheila Rich, Kim Pickering, and Doug Moorhead.
The only difference from this year's trip is we have the same destination, but just a different agency, so they actually reached out to us, they're pretty local, somewhere in Plymouth, right, yeah. So they reached out to us, it's a better deal, and it gives us more of a city feel, and like, our class is definitely not a sit-down, just museum type of class, we like to go and do stuff. So this trip has like provided us with not just a better price, but a better experience. So that's, what you guys see is like the new trip, and it's what we're going with if you guys approve. Any questions when you guys are done reading?
Did you guys come up with this, or did the travel agency kind of come up with it?
They did, and then we like sent them some things that we might not-
Yeah, like they like gave like an itinerary, and we like switched some things out for what our class would like more.
You know where your, where your hotels are located?
We don't know that yet. The travel agency's doing all that.
They chartering a bus?
Yes, they are doing that too, they're chartering a coach.
Excellent.
Yep, they're doing all of it for us, we don't have to do anything.
They're fantastic to work with.
Well, they reached out to us, because we had, we were going through another company, and I tried to get ahold of them, but they were not very easy to get ahold of. So they reached out to us, and they were actually able to save us almost three thousand dollars. So that was a bonus, and so I gave the itinerary to the kids with both. And I said, I'm not going to tell you the price, and I'm not going to tell you what I want, but tell me what you like. And they liked this one much better, there was a lot more exploring, there was a lot more things to do. The other one felt like very choppy, and you're only doing three things that day, you know, so. And that was a lot of museums on the other one, and our class is not like museum kids, so. They want to explore and look and see. And I think the Six Flags is the last day, really like just did it.
Yeah, that, that was a big push.
Well, that's great.
Yeah, and it was nice to work with somebody local too.
I'll meet with her.
That's okay, you can come and join us.
We'll give a lot of really fun stuff too.
Yeah, it looks really exciting.
Long, long time ago, pristine class used to have, but they did the cruise, but we did a day in New York City prior to getting on.
I would definitely recommend, and they have been great to us.
We didn't realize that we had the day off planned, but we pulled up our first stop, and he was there. And went us there, and then took us around the city, and showed us all the things that we had no idea that, you know, to fit in with. It was really, you know, personal.
Yes, yes, and that's what we're hoping for, yeah.
Now, I have a question.
Do you have a question?
Oh, we're leaving Monday and Friday, but it's during April break.
It's during April break, we're leaving on a Monday and coming back on a Friday. That way, we can avoid the weekend traffic, that's what she was suggesting, so, which works out.
Do we approve this?
Yeah. Well, have fun, we're going to make a formal approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, might as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the senior class chair that was presented.
A second.
Thank you, Amy, thank you, Joe. Any further discussion?
Good luck.
Thank you.
If you're probably saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay, extensions? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great time.
Do you have to approve the chaperones, or are you good there as well?
Is that something that, that you have to administration before it comes to us?
Yes. We can just hammer our bases on that conclusion. It's a good thing the whole thing.
Is that something that's gone through administration first, so I'm set?
Yes, that is correct.
We have seen those, okay, yeah. So I'm, you want to do it separate, or?
Sure, I'll make a motion also to approve Sheila Rich, Kim Pickering, and Doug Moorhead as the senior class trip chaperones.
Thanks, Jay. Any further discussion? On table, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, extensions? Our motion carried.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let me go with that, because quite the, you're being more of a shared, all a lot of stuff.
Yeah. Thank you.
My girl, thanks.
All right, the next, I want the agenda to approve of the minutes of October ninth, two thousand nineteen. How is Jay?
All right.
Thanks, Amy. Does anybody have any comments, corrections, concerns? Hearing none, on table, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, extensions?
Obseating because I have to hurry.
And that motion carried. I had no correspondence. Judy didn't, no. Debbie, that's on the table, did you hear that first?
Yeah, payroll, manifest going around. Just, we did purchase a van today, just so you know, we've got a two thousand nineteen Dodge Grand Caravan, seventeen thousand miles, twenty-three thousand dollars.
Nicely done, awesome, thank you, all right.
Anyone on the sale of the Oba?
No, working with the company that we bought it from, just to get some pricing to put out there. So the guy I was working with is on vacation right now, so he's supposed to get back to me, but as soon as we can, we're going to get that out to other schools, transportation companies.
Judy, super handy support.
Okay, after the power, just wanted, after the power, we just wanted to come back, and we did with the help of technology and everything, we were, we finally came back home. So that, that worked out, it was a little challenging in the morning, but we did get everything straightened out. Let's see, I did want to mention that you do in your, I'm going to skip over here, down in your, in your bootbola, you do have a copy of the schedule, the high school schedule, and the numbers on there are the number of students that are in each class.
So there are seventy-seven high school students, correct?
Yes, yeah. And the budget process has begun, the teachers do have their marching orders, and they are now developing their budget. And that will come back to administration at the beginning of November. And administration will go through each budget, each of the teachers, and then look through them and do comparisons and analysis and whatnot, and we will, then Deb will get all that information together and then be able to present a budget to the board at the end of November. Right now, for our school nurse position, we are working with Terry Saborn two days a week and Robert Wetherall three days a week, so we are covered right now, so, good people, so. We're moving forward with that. In the meantime, like I said, the position is posted, and we'll continue to get posted until we get one full-time person. I did go to a meeting regarding Medicaid reimbursement last week. There is another meeting on Tuesday, which I will be doing via phone, I don't go down to conference. Had a hundred and fifty people at the meeting, and there were fifty people- I think, had a hundred and fifty people at the meeting and there were fifty people, um, conferencing in, on my phone. It's a, it's a pretty, uh, complex system. Um, they're definitely staying with this emergency rule, uh, that does cut out, like I said, we, this district had ninety-two thousand dollars in Medicaid. Um, we're gonna try and do whatever we can to do that, all the outside agencies are, are looking at MSB, who does all of our contracting for our, um, Medicaid funds, is looking into different options that they may be able to support the districts with. A lot of the districts are not, are dropping their, um, estimated amount of money that they typically get from Medicaid. They're dropping it down a lot because they're not sure if we're gonna be able to get, you know.
Are they concerned about, um, the, the involvement of the parents getting the, the referral first from the physician though?
Uh, well, it's, 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 it's not necessarily the, the parent who has to get the referral. It's a school district has to find a medical doctor who will, um, oversee that not only give the order, the medical order for the service, but oversee it on a weekly basis. And we, in, in, there's no one to pay for that, so, so the district would have to, to pay for a medical doctor to come in or, um, you know, nurses that have doctors as a nursing system, um, type of, um.
But you know, you can't wait to see the doctors, it is like.
Exactly.
They're not gonna, so. What's that time?
They really don't know, when that question was asked, they said, "Well, you'll, you'll have to go up, you know, to the different medical, um, agencies and, and find a doctor that will do that." And, and right now, it's the district that will be paying for that service, so it may just even up.
It may be worth it, they, I mean, you get a P A to come in one day a week or something, or, well, you know, occasionally as needed. And we have.
There are cases where, right, there are cases where the medical doctors of the families, like if you were doing O T or whatnot, that they would, they would be the ones that you would get a prescription from.
Right.
And in order for the O T to, and a lot of districts already do that. Or when you're talking, um, you know, speech and language, you know, or psychological, um, M D stuff, aren't, that's not their area of expertise. And then, th- then the op, then the question comes in and when, as you're making these decisions, they have to be a part of a team by law, an I E P team, and yet they're not, because they're just coming in and giving the order with having no knowledge of the educational component, because we're just not looking at, we're not looking at, we're looking at the educational component of that. You know, if they need O T, what type of O T services do they need in order to, to learn within the six hours of day they're in a school?
Yes, that's right.
So we, we're lacking the level of expertise, so that, that was brought up. Um, what also was in question, however, was not asked, but, um, was out there, is the fact of what happens with all these, the monies that, that are available to the school districts and they're not able to access because they don't have those doctor's orders.
Right.
And, um, that, that has not come up yet, but that will be one of the questions that is, what is, where is all that money going to go?
Are people, districts preparing then, like backing off on numbers, preparing for budgets? So we're gonna assume that we don't have money?
Yeah. Yeah, your, your Medicaid money is, it, it, it determine, goes with the taxes, it's not, we don't have that part of your.
It's a revenue.
Your, your budget, you know, some districts do.
So they probably have to back off.
Well, yeah, it's just another revenue that they've advised not to really budget for that revenue right now.
Judy, how long do we have to get all this accomplished?
The final, um, um, decisions are gonna be made in February twenty twenty. But right now, they're, they're having meetings throughout, between now and December, they'll be having meetings where, you know, a lot of people are going to all different agencies, both private and public agencies have been going to this.
And when they make that decision, will it be, will it be effective nearly in the next four years?
It's in effect now. It's just whether it's gonna be permanent, but they put it into effect in August.
Yeah, it is, you know, where is it? Oh, that's right, that's right, a month and a half later.
Right. So not, um, had a chance to do.
So we've been reaching out to parents of kids who need services to see if it's possible to get them away?
Well, the only thing is, is that, that, that's confidential information, so we have to, we have to go out to all, all parents whose children have an I E P and who receive.
Right.
So, so we do that anyway, cause that's part of our process.
So they're already being asked, if they maintain a warrant about?
No, that's what we're going to start doing, you know, we're gonna start doing that, but we, we, um, the, the parents who are on Medicaid and who have access to that, um, whoever they are, um, will, they do, we have some of the process in place already because of the burden.
And that too.
You know, but with that particular process, we're going to have to start asking for, you know, a medical prescription.
Right. Now, is it only Medicaid or is it private insurance as well?
No, it's Medicaid to school, that's the program. And so that, that's the big thing on the table right now, it is very, very, very big concern. And, um, and that's out of the strategic plan, we did have a meeting last week on the strategic plan with the administrative team. We have not finished that component, we have a portion of it, so we will be having another meeting this, next week, on the twenty-eighth, and we will finish up with the administration. And, um, with that, we are working on, um, techno, role of technology in the school district. We are looking at pathways of learning and where that learning occurs. I'm looking at students and teachers' roles in the educational process. And we're trying to keep it very broad, so that it's that all the different components that start coming into play will fit under each of these areas, the focus. And that's it.
Judy? Anyone have any questions, Judy? Principal, do you have a question?
Um, you know, as, as I go along through this process here, being over here, it's refreshing to, to see the, the charitable endeavors that a lot of our students and our faculty take place in. So right now, we have a lot of, of multiple stuff that kids are trying to earn money to, uh, give to charities, um, throughout this week of October, whether it's Metta Library, or at least a lot of the kids raising some, um, some funds that they're kind of donating through, um, ah, geez. I'm a little lost now. But, but every time I turn around, it seems like the kids are wanting to give, and, and to me, that's, that's really refreshing. So I just, I just kind of want to reflect that, you know, um, and, and I like to see that. So they're, you know, those opportunities at hand, they're creating maybe to do that. Um, I, I want to talk a little bit about our sports teams, our boys, you know, they, they're making a playoff push and I don't think that's happened in a long time. And I'm proud to see that they kind of come together here and they're learning to work well with each other. And so it's a really cool thing as well, you know, that spirit just kind of keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And I like to see that in them. Um, our girls teams struggle a little bit, but it's okay, they're getting there, they're growing. And we look forward to those teams developing over the years as well. Um, you know, based on the, uh, the weather and the cancellation that we had to do, I just wanted to commend our staff and our students and our families as well for handling that in stride. I know some of those things got out kind of late, but, um, couldn't really be helped, the circumstances and the timing of the, the power outage and stuff. So, but I think, you know, we pulled together the people that were at school and, um, you know, the, the parents took everything in stride. And I like that, I appreciated that. Another part would be our Q P A, the Quality Performance Assessment that took place. Um, we could have still go at the school here, was, I, I think it's a really positive turnout. I think our teachers are getting a lot out of it, there's, it's a, it's a long process. Um, and we're kind of looking forward to the next one in, in November, um, seventh. Um, there's roughly forty people, maybe a little bit more that, that come in, because there's a little, a little bit of the, when a really engaging speaker. Um, the other thing that we kind of did is we, you know, we went to the, the district, brought people to the polygraph training, which was really insightful and, um, some of the takeaways that I have is, is, um, it's interesting because she talks about social skills versus academic skills and what's needed to be able to cooperate with people and work in the room and collaborate with others. And, and oftentimes, those social skills are the things that need to be developed. And those things that need to be, um, you know, you really need to plan for those more so than the academic skills. And at this time, with all the distractions that we have in our lives and the social, emotional learnings, it's, it's, it's interesting to have or point that out for us to realize as a staff, okay, what are we doing socially? And I think by using our advisories wisely, um, that, you know, we, we can, we can, um, prosper within the academic setting based on how we communicate socially, socially emotionally, so. Um, another part that I kind of thought was interesting is, you know, um, you know, we can't really change what happens to a child at home, you know, but how we do school is, it was another kind of theme that, that came along. How do we do school, how do we do our environment, our community within these walls? And having those high expectations that kids understand need to happen in order for them to be successful here. Thought that was a really cool message, um, because we're not their home, but home away from home in sorts. And so we have to be able to have that kind of discipline in play and, um, be able to be empathetic as well. So that, that was really, really interesting, I think we got a lot out of it by doing that polygraph, um, training. And, um, some of the upcoming events are, again, the kids wanting to advocate for themselves, they're gonna be hosting a dance, not this Friday, but in the next Friday, yeah, so they're, they wanted to do a dance, and it's like, good, I'd rather have them spend time, you know, at our school at night and evenings or weekends, rather than them doing some things that they weren't supposed to be doing. So they're looking forward to setting up that dance and, um, having a good time. Um, we also have our Veterans Day celebration, uh, I mean, some, some of you have gotten invitations with that, um, and you all want to come, right? And then the other part is I'm working with, um, the McDonald's over here to kind of showcase, um, like a, like a liquid exhibit, you know, and they're gonna be trying, they're gonna be coming in to present an opportunity for us to earn some money. Um, they want to do an all-school assembly, so Jenny and I were talking about some times that maybe that could happen. And whether it's just the elementary at this moment or both schools is kind of up in the air. Um, but I think it's a really good way for us to meet with the public and let them know, they don't always get an opportunity to go into a school, um, but, you know, get an opportunity to go have lunch or something like that and see what we do. And, and I like the idea, I was talking with Ms. Foley today about, um, what it should look like and how things could happen. And the way she described it, and I was using her words, is like an exhibit of what we could do. And, and I thought that was really a, a cool way of looking at it, to promote what we do not only to our community, but visitors and to our community. That's kind of what's going on.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
I, I just want to make a couple of comments, um, as far as the sporting events, I just wanted to say that your presence, and Judy, your presence at the sporting events this year, it hasn't gone unnoticed. Um, and a lot of community members have made comments that it was nice to see, you know, the principal and the superintendent at the games and, and that sort of stuff, so, uh, I just wanted to share that with you, if you haven't heard that already. And then the other piece was the storm, I think Facebook came in really went handy on the storm, you know, so good thing you, you got that up and running when you did. I mean, there was still some confusion because of the live and the, and the voicemail messages went out, but, you know, when it's on Facebook, it's real and, and we knew, we knew it was closed.
I was feeling, knowing that, like, we were on the.
Yeah, that was, that was, yeah, yeah. There was no win, there was no win. But, but you had, you had an extra channel to get information out there, and, and it worked. You know, cause people started correcting each other as well when there was misinformation being put out, so.
I agree.
Um, it was, it was Facebook working in a positive way towards our school, which is, you know, something you should acknowledge.
Can I have a quick question about that, is, does our, like, call-out system not work when the power's out? It was really interesting, because the apps that we have on our phone, um, all of us, like Jenny has them, I have them, um, Brenda has them, and, and nobody could log in, we could not, we ended up having to look up the eight-hundred number to try to get ahold of these people. And, and, um, Jenny was, Jenny's actually on the side of the road, trying to get ahold of these people, I'm trying to get ahold of these people. And it was, it was, it could have been from the storm, I think that probably was it, um, but we were able to maintain afterwards. So after the storm cleared and stuff like that, we, we kind of got together, are you able to log in, can we go through our process of getting these messages out, and, and we could. So, but it, it was, it was kind of bizarre that it all went out, of, we were, we weren't able to access it all at that point.
And, um, you discussed that with the provider for that? Like, is there, is a company in it?
I don't know, so I'm not checked in, so is that?
Yeah, I, I discussed it with their support, uh, Blackboard Connect is the system we use.
Yeah.
We're actually in the process of upgrading all that. Um, so essentially, the old system relied upon a ping to location to confirm the user. And the thinking was that they weren't able to ping our internal systems to confirm the user because we were down. So the new platform ensures direct communication with an authorized app user via a security token, which used to be housed, well, is currently housed here in a server versus in the cloud, so anywhere it can be reached.
So we're not gonna do anything locally anymore, cause that seems like, you know, the power outage seems like a fairly common thing?
Correct, uh, well, again, that's, to be honest with you, it's a, it's, it's, it's a feature of their old platform. So we're in the process of converting to the new platform, which solves all those issues. Um, and again, it's a matter of upgrade, um, and we're in the middle of it, so.
I didn't follow you as far as what you're saying, anything local with the.
Yeah, so what you're saying is that in order for the call-out system to work properly, even remotely for you guys, our system here has to be up, because it checks in with our normal system at the school to make sure that you're not fending users.
It's, it's a geo-fencing or it's just a, it's to ensure a proper and authorized user, essentially, yeah. Um, and again, our system does have, uh, at this point, about twenty minutes of battery backup, uh, but it's, it's dedicated to critical systems, which I've since ensured that this is. It's served, served as critical within the rack that has the twenty minutes plus of battery backup. So that was definitely a misstep in infrastructure on my part to create that, but again, so, you know, unfortunately, it took what it did to realize the flaw in, in the process, but it has been corrected.
But, so going forward, it, it will work?
Yes.
And then when we switch over, it will, it'll be normal?
That is correct, yeah.
Well, you said the, the battery backup will take care of it.
At this point, twenty minutes, and again, by the time, you know, twenty minutes is plenty of time to get that message out once we realize, hey, this is gonna be down. And that's, that, 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 that's. Right, and.
But the upgrade will power.
Yeah, yes, yes.
What's the time period for the upgrade?
Uh, we're about three weeks away from that.
Three weeks, Mark?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's just a matter of migrating all the user accounts to the new system, validating that they're good numbers. And it, it, the new system has text functionality as well as, uh, social media feed postings as well that will automatically go out when you do the all-call. It's a full suite of, uh, communication.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Committee reports, Brian Filius.
Hi, guys. Compared to the last facilities committee, I think, a lot of the same things we took off, but, um, I guess key points, uh, Mark's gonna move forward with just getting us some more solid numbers. If you guys remember, um, in the meeting last time, we discussed maybe trying to expedite this roofing project instead of stretching it out over the six years, so he's going to just, let's just call it tidying up some numbers based on multiple sections that we did as probably being the most important as far as, you know, putting a few different groupings together. You know, it'll probably be in the neighborhood of, we'll call it a hundred thousand dollars, you know, to be safe. Uh, however, it'll expedite that process of doing this every single year. We think that's a good thing, um, there was some comments made, you know, if we, if we fix the floors or if we don't have roofs and, you know, we're not really helping ourselves, but also, you know, he cut back a little bit on, on flooring projects, you know, and so we're trying to balance a lot. Through all these, I think, you know, we, we spend about a hundred thousand dollars a year on these types of projects, and so we may come in a little over, you know, a hundred and twenty or something, but we think we can accomplish a whole bunch of stuff at once if we keep that moving. He also did a walkthrough with Wayne Fillion and his team, um, that, that, last time I, you know, the plan was that we have some information by, um, bits going out with the member, I'd like to feel like we're almost around the same path, and they just like made the work of this planning together, so. Seems like we're pretty close on pace with that, so we'll be ready for March. Uh, what else did we touch base on, good things? Uh, a problem that we're getting to, apparently, there was some damage to a roof last year, discovered to the standing seam roof. It was estimated, it's gonna be about twenty-eight thousand dollars, it's a full gun. But our suggestion, um, he's been doing his due diligence and they reached out to the roofing company, reached out this and that, there is no one else that helps them, and that's just making a difference, but, you know, to reach out now, you know, we, we're suggesting But, you know, to reach out now, you know, we're suggesting that he reaches out to insurance just to get, to begin a conversation. And he has some now solid information to leave the way with. At least that they can take a look at it. And, you know, when you deal with those things, at the very least, maybe we get, you know, they say, you know, leave the fix, you know, we, we assume it's this much, fifteen grand. Or at least they'll offset something, we start a conversation there. It's not affecting anything. I shouldn't say that. It's not causing, it won't cause any future damage because it's still going to run below the standing seam. I feel like we basically had a patient at one of the rates. So, we're not getting leaking or anything. We just, we don't want this to, you know, get a windstorm. If something comes from that direction, things start changing, let's tidy it up. But he's on that. That's cool. What else do we have? So, two things that we discussed, we had, we wanted to move forward on. We touched last, a couple of weeks ago, one ago, about the kiln in the art area. And how it's just antiquated, it's old. I guess the big problem with it too is that anytime they want to fire anything, the teacher has to stay at school until it's done because they can't actually leave. And, and it's old. And it doesn't really work that well. Mark found the thirty-five hundred dollars, basically, we can get one that's safe, modern. And like, people can go home and handle it, so, you know, I think that's a big deal. And, and we do have one sitting in equipment fund that, you know, trust fund that we could do that. He's also, also looking, you know, they may find places that better. Thirty-five hundred is a, is a solution for our associate, which is pretty cool. And the other thing that they touched on is the air cooler in the kitchen, bad motor. Everything. I mean, essentially, to rebuild it, you know, it's going to cost about two grand or you can just throw in there and go in for twenty-nine hundred. Again, looking to take that out of the equipment trust fund, which I think we have plenty of money in. And it's really not actually going to have much money for those two things that they accomplished, pretty important stuff. One, you have air cooler in the kitchen. And the kiln thing, I think, just needs to be done. And we shouldn't have a piece of equipment that causes someone unstaffed to have to hang out longer than they need to. And it's something as simple as that, and probably do things better in the long run. I don't know if we have that hearing. I think that's probably what we touched on. Also, Mark, we had, you know, over the last few months, you know, we've, we've been going through our master plan. Mark nicely just kind of, we brought it into like, a little bit more up to date, you know? Give up some things on there, poke holes, I think, but that's okay. And one other thing they did that I think is kind of cool, because I don't know for it, but you just said in the past, is he's reached out to the electrical co-op about the potential of adding some panels, potentially, whether they're out in the back fields or something for some solar to offset costs. And they gave him, I believe him, if I'm saying it wrong, but a list of contractors that are, that are involved and that work directly with them. And so, set up some meetings, they can check out some opportunities. And I, I think that's a great thing for our, our area where we live, to have something like that. And maybe it's a short payoff. You know, maybe, maybe this doesn't work, but it'd be, it's not, it's worth the discussion. They should say, hey, can you put a little solar farm back here? Even if it runs some project or some thing, you know, it's kind of neat. Keeps the power going when we lose power and the painting go off.
The more backup the better, for sure.
It used to be a lot of... I think I touched on it, everything, though. Oh, yeah, the other good one is they did put glass into the secretary's office here. So, that's protected from the bulletproof glass at this point.
And my microphone works, so I can talk to you.
That's awesome. And we did discuss, you know, we did the high school. They're looking at this, administration's looking at how much money we have up sitting from that project. So, we'll move forward. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Brian? Hearing none, I'm going to make a motion to post equipment trust fund here to discuss the replacement of the kiln in the kitchen air cooler. Thanks, Jim. Anybody have any discussions left?
Next meeting.
For next meeting here. Hearing none, all favor please, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, abstentions, and that motion carries.
Any other committee's...
We met last time and looks like we, this stuff that we went over last time is now the first reading and then this is second and stuff.
So, the first, the first read is running the packet?
Yep. Contracts and school closing.
The school closing, no, we had changed, I thought we had changed the second sentence where it says, we're going to be violating the superintendent or school board's jurisdiction. Were we going to take that off?
Yes, we were. We were going to eliminate that and then actually say, put up the direct authorization superintendent or his, or his or destiny. Just to cover our bases. Yeah, and then get rid of the...
I have a question on how you guys do that, just knowing that I work forty-five minutes away and some of the weather is so much different here and there. We're all three of our administrators who play distance away. How, who, who actually makes the...
We talked to the, the road agents. And we talked to the facilities director. Because they're, the facility director is among who has to prepare the school for us. So, so if they need more, yeah, they need more time. So, if you need more time than I, they say yes or no, then we say, okay, we'll give you two more rounds. You know, and then we'll check back with them. And then we check with the road agents, of course.
Is the bus company involved in that?
Oh, the bus company, right, the bus company too.
But the reason we were believing in that last paragraph was essentially, or the last sentence was essentially, we didn't want to, we wanted to have to do it, make, give that...
Who, which panel?
Which stock?
Do you, do you put in...
I'm sorry. Well...
Did you, it was not filing?
Mark, Mark is in communication with them.
Yeah, I talked to either town, yeah, depending on who's doing it.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah.
And we usually start around four-thirty in the morning with that process, so it's a funny time.
So, that was a good thing. So, I guess, I think we moved that with correction to second reading.
EBCC is fine?
EBCC, I, I didn't have any updates on that.
You can always look at it again, it's like, can I just make sure only, for that, when it gets into this, after the second readings, because the committee will be meeting next, the next one. On the school closing, I just want to boil that up for you one more time.
Do you want to keep that at first reading then, or do you want to...
Yeah.
Revision?
Yeah. And also on second reading, on DJV. That's the one, the purchasing procedure, where we add an amount of money.
Are you sure?
We add over a hundred dollars on that one. That, that makes it challenging for us to do that because that means anything over a hundred dollars, we need to go, see, we do that anyway. So, for example, like school, whatever.
Well, we have, we have a lot of bid price contracts for a lot of our items. Or we use, or we state, I know, it, well, that's the thing. I mean, so a, a teacher is getting a book or, I don't know, some general supply for their classroom. That's a hundred and two dollars. Is that saying that we need to now get a...
Well, the reason that we added a hundred dollars in there was because there was no limit, which meant that anytime you bought a pencil...
And anybody could do that.
Right. I mean, and when we buy pencils, we do have a bid price for all of our school supplies from a specific vendor each year. We use state bid prices for a lot of things, like Home Depot. We have, we have the state bid prices for that, you know? So, I don't know, just...
It would make sense to me that one, even though a hundred's better than not having anything, a hundred's awfully low to have to get.
Please leave your suggestion.
Right, because that's just what we sort of settled on in, when we had the discussion in committee, that there's just certain things that we shouldn't have to be putting up to bid or giving...
Yeah, I mean, when they get books, books can be quite expensive, but they do go to the book...
So, what's the threshold that, right, that you...
I don't know, I was thinking at least five hundred or, or a thousand, I don't know.
Well, why don't we not move that then from second reading? We'll pull it out and, because...
I'd have to go through a kind of sample, some of the, some of the purchases that we make.
And that way, you can have a way to be sure so it doesn't have...
The way it was before was everything...
Yeah, yeah, five dollar cars for market that... Required, you know, to do research as well and be cheaper than the Home Depot.
Isn't that one that we say, have that for first reading?
But that doesn't discuss that next year.
That's not for, that's not... So, I'm going to make a motion to move policy EBCC from first to second reading.
So, the changes?
That one did not have any changes.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Joe. Any further discussion on that? All favor please, signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay, abstentions, and that motion carries. Were we holding, we were just going to hold it?
Can I ask, is there any way we can get these in our packets prior to the reading?
It's typically...
Oh, okay. No worries, that's fine. I'll, I'll figure it out pretty quick then.
No, we'll continue then.
So, we're going to keep school closing at first reading?
We'll, we'll hold it forward. So, I will also make a motion to approve the following policies. Policy DJ, EBV slash ADD, EBVC, EBCA, and EBCD. Sorry, EBCB.
I didn't get that.
Can you put a discussion on those policies? Hearing none, all favor please, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, and abstentions, and that motion carries. Business requiring board action, nomination. New business? Class of, continuing business, class of, I don't know, if you can, we've got the update. I'm just going to take a moment. Something was brought to my attention again today. I just feel as the board chair, I just want to, just as a reminder, bring it up. I believe I have a continuing business. If, if anybody has any concerns about policies, procedures, things that are going on in the district that we go to the administration and go to administration a reasonable amount of time to address or get back to you with whatever those concerns may have had before going to outside organizations or agencies or anything like that. Huh?
I, I, I did talk to you about something, but...
I don't know. I looked at everybody. I mean, I made it very janky. I did my best to look at everybody multiple times. I don't know.
Please just tell me.
I don't know. To be honest with you, I don't even know. I don't know, so.
I know.
But if, but if you have, but if you, if you have a question, if, then just talk to Judy.
Really, I have a couple of ones, and maybe the second major.
No, I think that the issue is, the issue is if we go to administration and then we don't give a reasonable timeframe to get information back and then we go to outside of the agency and bring the same concern to that agency, people are getting a response. Or just going directly to the agency without going to administration.
I'd ask, what, what agency does that agency?
Police Department, Fire Department, Department of Human Service, any, it could be anything. All right. I didn't say it because of student, but... All right. Student, no student.
Hi, thank you. So, I do have a couple of things from, one is from Katie Parent. She said, Lizzie Drew is the winner of the first round of the Chemical Engineering News and Pictures of Prometography Contest. So, she submitted a photograph of her work from chemistry class. She'll be moving into round two, which will be announced in December. It's kind of cool.
Very cool.
I didn't even know that was a thing. And then this is from Melissa Saborin and Kim Pickering. Today, the FBLA is, they attended the Fall Leadership Workshop in Manchester. Among the workshops and keynote speakers, Ling would receive the Gold Seal Chapter Award that the members earned last year. They're one of six in the state to receive this award. And the chapter started last year with the goal of becoming a Gold Seal Chapter. And they worked really hard to achieve and they're very proud of their hard work. That's the one too, which is cool, yeah. And they, they meet seven AM on Thursdays every, that's, that's commitment. Like, I'm there and they're like knocking on my window, can you let me in? I'm like, what are you doing here? I'm like, oh, FBLA, okay. And then Mr. Louts wanted to report on a couple of things. October ninth is Walk to School Day and it was a success with over fifty people that participated. Special thanks to the Lincoln PD as well as Marcus Corey for providing warm beverages at the start, which that was a cool one. The middle school boys and soccer teams finished off a successful season. And they most recently played in the Hayrow Soccer Tournament and they advanced to the second round, whatever that means. And then today, thank you, I'm like, I'm not sure what that means, but it is wrong, okay. Today was the last game of profile for the varsity teams. It looks like the boys will make the playoffs and play away next Wednesday, but we're not sure who yet, so it's exciting. And then the cross-country team is competing in their state meet at Dairy Field Park in Manchester this coming Saturday. Yeah, so a lot of things happening in this school. And all I have for you today.
Thank you. Community, Shilla?
No.
No? All right. I would like to, I've been asked to go into non-public, so...
Ninety-one, eighty-one. I make a motion to...
Thank you, ten seconds?
Second.
Thank you. All favor please, signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay, abstentions? Thank you, there'll be no votes after this, so.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.